Order selectmen for Tuesday, June 29. And we will begin with our, I'm sorry, June 24th. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Going too quickly here. We'll begin with our first agenda item, which is announcements of and updates on community events. Selectmen DeWitt.
Well, I will begin, and everybody should chime in, because there's several of these where more than, you know, other select persons were involved. But on Monday, there was a second working session on women and girls thriving in Brookline that's sponsored by Coalition of Brookline Mental Health and a number of other organizations that's really talking about challenges facing low-income women and girls, and identified some specific areas that we could work on: domestic violence, basic needs like affordable, nutritious food, and better access to programs and services. And there was also an interesting observation that young women today in Brookline probably have much better support services than the older generation. And to some extent, I think the people who are in the service providing force have recognized that the parent mothers, the mothers, as opposed to the young kids, often did not have some of the benefits that are available to girls in Brookline today, because we do have a lot of robust support services. So there's some question about what to do about that, and more conversations. And this morning, everybody except Ben, who I'm sure had to work.
I did.
You were excused. We had a groundbreaking ceremony with the Brookline Housing Authority, their members and staff for the new 32-unit affordable housing development at 86 Dummer Street. Selectmen Goldstein gave an inspiring speech.
Thank you.
And there were not just members of our board, but many supporters of affordable housing, I would say friends of the Housing Authority, local agency heads, and a huge number of people who are part of the 12 different funders for this project. So it's pretty impressive.
It's very exciting.
Coming up, want to comment now? I'll stop. I will pause. That's my only history event.
My biggest takeaway from that event this morning was just how many people and how much effort it takes to put a project up.
Unbelievable.
You could have built a skyscraper with the number of moving parts that were involved in that project. And it's a testament to the commitment of this town to ideals like affordable housing, that so many have given so much to make that happen.
Yeah, I'm thrilled that we have a site that's already under control of the Housing Authority.
Yes.
So we don't have to, we can have more affordable housing without some of the to-do we sometimes have. But I'm also, I think the Housing Authority has worked really, and the Housing Advisory Board, both, have worked really hard to get us to this point. And I'm very, very pleased. And I know that, I was talking to one of the Housing Authority members, who was saying that they've already started meeting with the other residents, who are certainly going to have to endure an uncomfortable summer.
Right.
But generally, I think even the other residents are, they're getting a new play area with a basketball court and some barbecue, you know, I don't know what exactly, some kind of barbecue things, and some play equipment for young children. So I think it's a win-win.
The, coming up tomorrow evening at the Brookline Senior Center will be the 19th Annual Public Health Policy Forum. It's sponsored by the Brookline Department of Public Health with many cosponsors. And this one, like many of the others, will be moderated by former Governor Michael Dukakis. It's a panel discussion, and I've attended, I don't know if I've attended all 18 prior ones, but I've certainly been to many of them. They're very, very informative and stimulating, and the folks who participate are leaders in the area. So it's, anyway, it's going to be at the Senior Center. Refreshments at 6:00, and the panel discussion starts at 7:00. And then, we were just talking about affordable housing development, there will be a meeting on Thursday evening. It's really a presentation to the planning board, but will be of some interest to Brookline residents, because it's an updated plan for the development at the Cleveland Circle Cinema Site, which will be a combination of residential hotel, restaurant, and retail uses. And this is now a significant point in time, because the Boston Redevelopment Authority has given preliminary approvals. So it sounds like, I don't know how long it takes, I mean, we were talking about the Dummer Street project, which I think has been in development for about eight or nine years. I mean, far too long. And this one, probably not quite as long, but still takes a while to get these things together.
Pushing that.
Anyway, it's moving, it's moving forward. And just finally, there will be no selectmen's meeting next Tuesday. It's the first week of our summer schedule, and we'll be meeting every other Tuesday.
Great. I'll add that I was at, I had a busy morning. I was also at a, what we call the vision session for program and space needs at Brookline High School, in light of our increasing enrollment. And a very productive session, well-attended by about 50 people, stakeholders. The discussion was led by consultants, SMMA, and a lot of very informative and interesting input that was, that came out of that meeting. And there's a second round of discussion that will happen in the early fall. And I'm glad to know that our school committee is thinking forward about these issues which are at our threshold right now.
Were they all participants? I'm just curious.
About 50, well, you know, if you've ever been to one of these charrette-type things, which I'm sure you have, you know, we divided up into smaller groups, private discussions in smaller groups, presentations in the larger group. It was, you know, all day, virtually all day.
Pretty intense. Good.
Good. If there's nothing else, then we'll move to our miscellaneous calendar. Our first item for consideration is the approval of the minutes from June 17, 2014. Any proposed edits or revisions, additions?
It didn't mention our timeouts.
Yeah, I know, that was convenient.
It doesn't have to. I just observed.
It doesn't have to, that's right. I had no edits this week either, so I will move that we approve the minutes of June 17, 2014, as submitted. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectmen Woszinski.
I will abstain.
And Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And so that's unanimous. Next matter is the question of authorizing Town Council to enter into a contract with a financial consultant, if and when the Zoning Board of Appeals requires financial services in connection with Chestnut Hill Realty's 40B project. It's the Hancock Village project. Yes, Allison Steinfeld.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Allison Steinfeld, Planning Director, here to respectfully request that you authorize the Town Administrator to enter into a contract with a financial analyst if and when the zoning board determines that it is necessary to engage said services. I would propose that the town hire Todd McGrath. He's on the faculty of MIT Center for Real Estate. He comes highly recommended by a member of our HAB, as well as the facilitator hired to help us out on the 40B application. This contract will be at no cost to the town. Similar to peer review, it would be paid for by the applicant.
Good. Has Mr. McGrath worked for the town previously?
Not that I know of.
Any questions or comments?
No, I just want to say, I know you, I've heard that sometimes people don't like to get involved with a controversial project, and it sounds like this guy's very qualified. I'm pleased that you were able to come up with somebody of that caliber.
I am, too. Thank you.
Good. Anything further? All right. I therefore move that we authorize Town Administrator to execute a contract with financial consultant Todd McGrath on behalf of the town and the Zoning Board of Appeals in connection with the Chestnut Hill Realty 40B project. Said contract to be funded from Chapter 44 S. 53G Developer Payments. All those in favor say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectmen Woszinski.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is, oh, Allison, I thought you were going to talk on this one, too, actually. So I ask that this be put on the, on the agenda. This is the question of executing a letter in support of the Mass Municipal Association's efforts to oppose the bill pending in, which will be before the Senate shortly, for a statute that will, will limit local authority in the sighting of wireless cellphone antennas and equipment. And Ms. Steinfeld.
Thank you. Section 4.09 of the town zoning bylaw regulates telecommunications equipment, subject to FCC regulations. Some of those bylaws expressly do not allow any telecommunications tower or antenna by right within the town. Applications for antenna 10 feet high or less are subject to planning board design review. Applications for antenna greater than 10 feet require special permit from the ZBA. No towers are allowed in the town, except for mono towers, which are effectively a flagpole. Even monopoles require special permit from the ZBA and are subject to setbacks and other dimensional requirements. And they're limited to only certain zones within the town. No wireless antennas or equipment are allowed on residences, public schools, hospitals, nursing homes, or historic sites. Furthermore, they're not allowed within 50 feet of any resident nursing home or hospital, or within 50 feet of any historic site. Finally, the owners are required to remove any obsolete equipment. The proposed legislation would eliminate all of those controls. Effectively, the town would not be in a position to exercise any control whatsoever over telecommunications equipment. Effectively, 4.09 would be eliminated. Therefore, obviously, I urge the board to take whatever action is appropriate to comply with MMA's request and aggressively fight this pending legislation.
Thank you. I'll add that, you know, this, this all came about approximately 10 years ago, as the cellphone revolution was beginning. I was on the planning board at the time, and the planning board was seeing, on a very weekly basis, proposals for cellphone antennas. Now, there were some proposals, there was some opposition to these proposals on grounds that were illegal to oppose it, and that is concern over radio frequency, radiation, and health concerns. There's a federal law on this subject that prohibits any kind of opposition, the local opposition, based on those concerns, so we're powerless there. But there were also some very legitimate concerns about cellphone antennas, and that is just their unsightliness, and also the question of what happens to them when they're obsolete, to make sure that they go away. The planning board, and probably Selco was instrumental at this, on this at the time, convened a group that, that worked on this, on this zoning bylaw for long and hard, and put a lot of effort into it, and came up with a, with a bylaw that has, you know, not only been extremely useful in making sure that our cellphone installations in this town are appropriate and not unsightly, and, by the way, still provide excellent cellphone coverage, but have also become a model for, for other communities. After we adopted this bylaw, the planning department was getting calls on, weekly, to, by other municipalities who wanted it adopted as their own, which they've done. And this bill before, it's already been passed by, by the House of Representatives, I understand, and it's part of an omnibus budget bill. And we need to support the MMA in their efforts to, to, to make sure that this does not become part of the omnibus budget bill that's adopted and signed by the governor, so.
I just add a footnote. Maybe Mr. Clark can answer my question. I had the impression that we've, we're still trying to remove the installations from the old.
Distributive.
Distributive antenna system, and I think I still see them around. So even though we have the bylaw and the intent, it's awfully difficult to enforce, and I can imagine the proliferation that would occur if there were no controls. It would just be.
Be almost like the double telephone poles.
Yeah, right. Just like double telephone poles.
Except there, we can, we can press to get rid of them.
Right.
Further question or comment?
No, I'm with you.
Good.
Just one minor correction. It's in the economic development bill that this proposal is in, not the budget.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Ben. I appreciate that. Like I said, I picked this up, just, it was in our information package.
Yep, right.
So I appreciate the speedy work and, by the town staff getting, getting up to speed on this, so that we can make our voices heard. I move that we execute a letter in support of the MMA's efforts in opposing the telecom industry proposals to remove local authority in sighting of wireless antennas and equipment. All those in favor say aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectmen Woszinski.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
The chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Now, moving to our main calendar. First item is item 4A, and this is a proposed resolution on the question of calling for full funding and timely implement, implementation of the Mass Complete Streets Certification Program. And we have with us today Scott. Please come forward. Sorry, Scott. Scott England.
Good evening.
Would you please tell us about this resolution and about the act?
Sure. Just a little bit of background. Over the course of last year and early part of this year, there was an effort to make up for the historic, historical lack of funding that we've had for transportation infrastructure in the state. And the legislature was successful in passing and getting signed by the governor the Transportation Bond Bill, which was otherwise known as House 4046. And this bill among, accomplished many things in terms of funding transportation infrastructure. But one of the things that it accomplished is something that should have a lot of appeal for a lot of municipalities throughout the state. And that is funding for a program that is designed to fund improvements in towns that are both the planning and the infrastructure, for improvements that are, among other things, considered to be consistent with an approach called complete streets. The approach aims to, you know, balance the needs of many kinds of users of the streets, whether they travel by transit, or on foot, or by bike, or whatever, by automobile, whatever mode. And in so doing, transform the streetscape, and, and as a result, the communities in which projects exist. And so, the idea is to set up a program by which communities can become certified as complete streets communities, and thereby be eligible for funding for these kinds of improvements. And so the, part of the bill contained a provision to do that. And this being a transportation bond bill, in order for that provision to be implemented, it also has to be funded by the governor and Secretary of Transportation, Secretary Davie. And so that has yet to happen, even though the bill was signed into law in April of this year. And so, at this point, the, a number of cities and towns are joining with the Massachusetts Public Health Association in calling on Secretary Davie to, to issue funding and, and direct his department to develop rules for the program. And so, the, the resolution before you basically acknowledges the support of the board for, for this program, and joins, and, and authorizes you to become signatories to the letter that the MPHA is sending jointly from cities and towns, their organization, to Secretary Davie.
Great, thank you. Questions from board members? Selectmen Daley.
I just have a comment, really. Several of us attended the program Scott put on a few weeks ago. And, and the, the concept of the complete streets is that you consider bicyclists and pedestrians, as well as cars. You sort of think about, and public transportation, so you're thinking about everybody that might be using your streets. I, I think certainly we saw tremendous interest, not only at that program, but we have heard about many bicycle issues. I'm, I'm hearing a lot from pedestrians in terms of Brookline as an age-friendly city. So I think it is something we should definitely join in.
Scott, how close is complete streets to a term that I know a little bit better, livable streets? Is it just one's a brand name and one's a generic name?
Well, livable streets is, is actually, it happens to be the name of a local advocacy organization, but it's, it also came from the title of a book that was done in, based on studies done over the 1970s, of how traffic affects communities, specifically in, in terms of social interaction among, within neighborhoods and communities. So, but people use the terms interchangeably. There are other related terms, such as contact-sensitive design, and shared space, and, you know, the term is a pretty broad one, and used by a lot of people to mean a lot of things these days, including environmental aspects, such as how stormwater is, is addressed, and, and public space, and seating, and all of this kind of thing. So.
Selectmen DeWitt.
I'd be curious, it's very interesting to me that it's the Public Health Association, as opposed to some other affinity organizations that I could think of that might be organizing this. But can you tell me, or tell us anything at all about what the money actually would fund, an example of the kinds of things that might be eligible for this funding?
It would actually fund many of the kinds of things that the town is doing already, in terms of the efforts to, to plan and design, for example, for accommodations for bicycles on our streets. As the last meeting of the Transportation Board, we considered the addition of bike lanes and markings on a number of streets throughout town. That would be one thing. It could fund, for example, a study to look at Coolidge Corner, and the, how, how the streetscape is meeting the needs of pedestrians, you know, relative to, to what the need is. I think Kara had just last, a couple of weeks, weekends ago, done a pedestrian count in Coolidge Corner that showed something like, within the space of two hours, there were something like 3,000 pedestrians entering and leaving on the various streets around. And that, that is a huge number compared to the amount of available space for pedestrians there. And so, the idea, so it, one of the things this could fund, for example, would be a study to look at that, and then help figure out how the infrastructure there might change to better accommodate the changing needs that we're seeing.
Well, you're, I think, didn't directly comment, or you didn't say what I think is also implied by this, and that is that sidewalks can also benefit from this, because that's where pedestrian feet are usually.
Exactly.
Okay.
Selectmen Woszinski.
I guess I'll amplify that, that this goes, this is bigger than just bicycle accommodations.
Yeah, right. That's my point.
Right. And we shouldn't just focus just on bicycle accommodations. But I, I would love to see, as we do new street projects, that many of the design principles that were presented at that conference be incorporated into our thinking, into our design thinking, as, as we go forward.
Great. Thank you.
Can you talk a little bit about how we might become certified? This is a letter to, to support funding, but how do we?
Yes. Well, there, there are five criteria that the bill lays out, and I don't have them in front of me. But they have to do with putting in place a policy that would address the needs of various users of the public way in the maintenance, and construction, and design, and planning of projects throughout the town, as well as large development projects, not just street projects. So that would be one thing. Some of the, the other measures are, you know, I don't have them on the tip of my tongue, but they're things that are, that other towns around us, actually, all of our neighboring towns, Newton and Boston, have already put in place. These towns already have complete streets policies that require these things to be looked at as part of any project, and, as well as many other towns and communities in Massachusetts as well. So, and, and the, I think they are, it's not a very, a terribly high barrier to overcome. And so, I see, you know, I see the process of getting Brookline certified to therefore be eligible for these funds for planning and construction, to be something that we can accomplish without a huge effort.
Are we likely to need a warrant article before a town meeting to implement some of these things?
I think that would be one way to do it. It's conceivable that it could also be done through an administrative policy.
Yeah, I think if it's a policy, it's something that can put something together, and then we vote on it.
Yeah. Depends if it requires, you know, a zoning change or anything like that.
Yeah. I think, you know, it would, it would, by the rules that are laid out, some kind of stakeholder process is required. And so, you know, I think you'll find no shortage of folks in town who are interested in working on this kind of thing. And so, so whichever way, ultimately, it comes about, I, you know, there are probably pros and cons to, to various pathways to get there, but I, I don't see it as a huge obstacle.
FYI, Somerville has passed an ordinance, and it has four components, which kind of may be what Scott's talking about. Pedestrian-focused elements, bicycle-focused elements, traffic calming, and/or greening elements, and transit-focused elements, as the sort of broad headings of, it kind of sounds like the principles that probably are included, or whatever you have to do to be in compliance, I'll bet.
What Somerville just passed is actually the culmination of probably a year-long community stakeholder process, whereby they, they put on workshops, and design charrettes, and neighborhood meetings, addressing various intersections and streets, and, as well as the zoning regulations and policy, and put together this whole thing after the year of that. They, they actually got federally, federal funding to assist with that effort.
Uh-huh.
And so, so, and I believe the cycle for funding for 2015 is, is passed at this point. But engaging in that kind of an effort would certainly be something that Brookline could do as well.
Good. Thanks for bringing this to our attention. I'm going to move that we adopt a resolution, and I'm just going to read the, the resolved clauses of the proposed resolution. I'm going to skip the whereas, as anybody wants to see those can refer to our, our record. But the following resolutions are proposed: that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Brookline recognizes the importance of the Complete Streets Certification Program and its potential benefits for the Town of Brookline. And be it further resolved that the Town of, that the, excuse me, that the Board of Selectmen supports full funding and timely implementation of the program. And be it further resolved that the members of the Board of Selectmen join the Massachusetts Public Health Association and other municipal leaders as co-signatories to a letter to Secretary Davie, and to indicate to the MPHA their intent to join before the MPHA's deadline of June 27, 2014. So move, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Selectmen Daley.
Aye.
Selectmen DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectmen Woszinski.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you for bringing it to our attention, Scott.
Thank you. And in my letter to you, I, I laid out the steps that you guys can have Patty take care of, or whatever, to actually get the signatures in place. So, thanks very much.
Thank you. Agenda item number five is the question of authorizing the filling of two vacancies in the Town Clerk's Department. And I see Mr. Ward here.
Mr. Chairman, moderator of members of the board. I'm here to ask you for authorization to hire for two positions. One, uh, probably. I'm here to ask you for authorization to hire for two positions, one a permanent, part-time, and the other one a permanent, full-time position. We're essentially down two people as we're heading into the electoral season. It'll be coming early with the September 9 primary.
Got it. That's true. Questions or comments from the board members? No?
No.
Seeing none. I only ask that you please make every effort to seek as diverse a candidate pool as possible, work with our Town Human Resources Department in making sure that that's...
Always have and will continue to do so.
Thank you. I move that we authorize the filling of the following vacancies in the Town Clerk's Department, a senior clerk typist, part-time, and a senior clerk, full-time. All those in favor say aye. Selectmen Daly.
Aye.
Selectmen DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectmen Waschinsky.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next is the question of authorizing the filling of the Network Systems Engineer position in the IT Department.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kevin Stokes, Chief Information Officer. You should have in front of you for your, for your consideration, the authorization to hire for the position of Network Systems Engineer. This is actually a position that historically has been outsourced and has actually been part of the IT Master Services Contract, which goes back, actually extends beyond my time here, so it goes back about 10 or 12 years. And a little bit of history on that, so as the years have gone on and as the needs have changed, we've, you know, for the most part pared down the services contract where it was really just an outsourced body. We've been fortunate in that over the 12 years that we've had the contract, now almost nine now that I've been here, we've only had three individuals. So that's a pretty good retention rate. The flip side of that is we've also had, you know, probably a false sense of security that we were paying market rate when we really weren't. And as I advocated to the Advisory Committee last fall, I thought we were probably living dangerously, that if we were continuing to outsource that position and that we had to true up that, we probably would pay a pretty good premium, given that the market conditions have changed. So we elected to bring the position in-house. It's our traditional help desk position, that's now a Network Systems Engineer. The gentleman's actually been doing it for the last couple of years. David McQuado was actually the electronic voting person you probably have seen at town meeting. The basis for the position really is to recognize the changing support needs of our environment. So we're no longer just a clerical office-based standard workforce, we're a very mobile workforce, we're one that uses the cloud, we're one that, you know, has a ever-increasing need for data, information, and 7x24 connectivity. So the position really reflects all those added responsibilities and really the critical nature of what we're doing now and sort of the stakes that we're at, that we have to challenge, we are challenged with, excuse me.
Good, thank you, Kevin. Selectmen Daly.
Yeah, I'm wondering, what portion of this person's time is spent on town-related business and what portion on school-related business?
Well, we have, there isn't a quick line down the middle. All of our help desk folks and all of our, you know, network support folks go where the problems are. Having said that, on the school side, there's obviously a heavy dependence on Apple products and, you know, our support help desk is largely driven by all the Apple products, the Mac laptops, et cetera. This person is, you know, largely the town side, but they do spend quite a bit of time on both sides because our network is shared by both sides.
And is this position being funded totally out of the town side of the budget?
Yes, it is.
Well, I'm perplexed. Why would that be?
Well, I think there are costs that are shared on both sides of the budget. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. And the school on the help desk side does certainly share their proportion, you know, in terms of the help desk labor that's out there as well. So there is actually a split.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, I move that we authorize the filling of the Network Systems Engineer T9 position in the Information Technology Department. All those in favor say aye. Selectmen Daly.
Aye.
Selectmen DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectmen Waschinsky.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is a question of authorizing the filling of a number of vacancies within the Public Works Department, and I will let Commissioner Pappas Sturgeon, who it turns out is also our Moth Commissioner, I learned this week.
A moth commissioner?
Moth, M-O-T-H.
Yeah, you're the local moth.
The insect guy.
The local moth.
The spray guy.
Local moth superintendent, is your title. You didn't know that?
I know it now.
You know, you should go tell a story on the moth radio, Andy.
Oh, moth radio, that's true.
Next time I come before you, I'll have a net.
Moth Superintendent Pappas Sturgeon, tell us about these two, these several positions.
I think there are actually, I counted eight. Did I get the right number?
Yes, there are eight vacancies, and if you could just bear with me for a few minutes, I think it warrants a little bit of an explanation, and I'm going to give you that. The item before you seeks authorization to fill eight vacancies within the Highway and Sanitation Division and the Parks and Open Space Division of this Department of Public Works. All eight positions have become vacant at various times due to internal promotions, retirements, and terminations. Within the Highway Division, the stonemason position has been vacant since March of 2014. The painter-laborer position has been vacant since April of 2014. And the two laborer positions within the Highway Division have been vacant since May of 2014. Within the Sanitation Division, we have two positions. The motor equipment operator grade-two position has been vacant since December of 2013, as well as the laborer position has been vacant since December of 2013. Within the Parks Division, we have two gardener laborer positions that have been vacant since January of 2014. The stonemason and laborer positions in Highway are assigned to various functions of roadway cleaning and maintenance. The painter-laborer position in Highway is assigned to traffic control and is part of the LED streetlight replacement program, among other things. In addition, one of our budget objectives for FY15 is the replacement of regulatory traffic signs, and that also falls under the purview of the Traffic Control Division. Both positions in sanitation are directly involved with curbside collection of solid waste and litter control. The gardener laborer positions in parks are assigned various duties maintaining parks and playgrounds. Because of the wide and varied responsibilities of the department, it is always difficult and challenging to accomplish our daily tasks with reduced manpower. For example, subsidizing the vacancies in sanitation, which has to be filled each and every day for trash collection, with highway personnel means that some functions in the Highway Division were accomplished less frequently. At the same time, the need for gardeners in parks is less critical during the winter, excluding storm events, of course, than in the spring and summer. All of this obviously necessitates some increased overtime spending when the need arises, and sometimes the deferral of some of the tasks that we are assigned to do, perhaps less frequently. However, the possibility of potential budget reductions in FY15 for solid waste collection, if the board were to decide to privatize those functions, made it seem prudent not to fill certain vacancies to allow for absorption of the sanitation cuts, the potential sanitation cuts, within the DPW budget. If the board was presented with a decision to privatize the curbside collection of solid waste, it would seem to be a more palatable decision for the board to make if they weren't also faced with the added burden of potential layoffs in personnel, rather than just attriting and transferring personnel to other functions of the department that were vacant. So we determined that it was a prudent management decision to not fill certain vacancies to allow for that to happen in the event that it were to happen. However, because of the bidding process, this was, this did not require this decision to be made by the board. We were able to come up with other options to keep private, curbside collection of solid waste in-house because of the unfavorable bidding process that we endured back in February. Keeping the positions vacant was no longer necessary. The department at this time respectfully requests your authorization to fill these positions as soon as possible. With this favorable action, the DPW will be back to full staffing.
Great, thank you. Comments, questions from board members? Maybe you could tell us just a little bit about what having these positions vacant has meant.
Yeah, as I said, you know, it's not always in our best interest to keep positions vacant, especially that many. We did have 11 positions vacant. You graciously authorized us to fill three of those 11 two weeks ago, an engineer and two pipe players in the Water and Sewer Division. They were kind of unrelated to the whole solid waste question. These eight were kind of tied into the solid waste question. You know, I think long and hard about decisions that involve personnel, and it's not always an easy decision to keep positions vacant, but in order to avoid potential layoffs. So, yeah, we spend more overtime sometimes on things that have to be done, that cannot be deferred, on items that can be deferred. We would sometimes defer those tasks, and other items of work might occur less frequently. So, you know, we've endured all of that through the, not so much in the wintertime because that's more geared towards storm events, but most definitely in the spring and going into our summer season where we definitely have more involvement in roadway maintenance and parks maintenance.
Okay. Well, I thank you for the, for the planning around that sanitation decision, and I think it's clear that it's time to put these positions back in gear. So unless there's further question or comment from board members, I see none. I'm going to move that we authorize the filling of the following vacancies within the Public Works Department, a motor equipment operator, number two, a painter-laborer, a stonemason, three laborers, and two gardener laborers. All those in favor say aye. Selectmen Daly.
Aye.
Selectmen DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectmen Waschinsky.
Aye.
Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
The chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Just one observation as you leave, and that is, at least you seem to have been able to deal with the planning and preparation for landscaping in the public spaces, even while you were short on staff, because things really looked great, and I'd like to pass that on, please, to Erin Gallantine.
I will, thank you. That's always, of course, one of our top priorities. Thank you.
Thank you again, Commissioner. We now have a few interviews for boards and commissions. First on our agenda is Harold Peterson for the Board of Assessors. Mr. Peterson. If you would formally introduce yourself for the record and tell us a little bit about what you've been doing and why you want to continue doing it.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Harold Peterson. My full-time job is an economist. I teach at Boston College. I've been on the Board of Assessors since 1990, and I've enjoyed it. It's a lot of fun. I see it as a chance to be a part of the community and to do something that's practical in terms of what I teach. I teach statistics, econometrics, capital markets. It's a lot of valuation involved. I think the fact that I know regression is of some use to the board, we use a regression model, and I think the fact that I took the courses with troops in the field to learn assessment as they practice it complements my knowledge as an economist and is possibly a help. So I would enjoy serving another term, but I leave it to you, of course.
Thank you. Questions?
This is more of an accolade. I think we are, we are very lucky to have someone with your background who's devoted as many years to the Board of Assessors as you have, so I just want you to know, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I will just second that by also add that we are fortunate to have folks with your qualifications who are willing to give so much free time, volunteer our community. You could probably calculate this in your head, it would take me a calculator, but I know we have a huge leverage in terms of the benefits that come to the town, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you. I understand we have a fairly low incidence of applications for abatement and questions of the assessors' decisions in this town.
There has been a dramatic change in these 24 years in terms of the number of appeals before the Department of Revenue and in terms of applications for abatement.
Yeah, that's what I saw. You must be doing something right there.
Impressive.
Very good. Thank you for your time this evening. I don't think there's any more questions, right?
And I don't believe we have any more candidates as, for the Board of Assessors.
Right, so we're not going to make the appointment tonight, but we will shortly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your contributions. Next is Marion Laza for the Conservation Commission for reappointment. Good evening, Marion.
Good evening. I'm here for reappointment as an associate commissioner. I've been associated with this commission for more years than I care to count. First as a full commissioner, and in recent years as an associate. I'm a retired graphic designer. I did the brochures for all the sanctuaries. I've been most closely interested in the sanctuaries, especially in Los Spines. I've also been involved lately in the signage project that's moving in fits and starts with sanctuaries. I enjoy watching the commission and being its historian in some sense.
Very good.
That's what I can tell you. I'm not a voting member of the commission, so.
Thank you.
Out of curiosity, though, if the, if a member is absent and you're sitting, you don't vote?
No.
Huh. I think in some...
In some commissions.
Some commissions that...
Associates do vote.
Yeah.
And are you, would you ultimately want to be a permanent member, or are you...
No, I think the responsibility is greater than I want to take on at this time in my life. I do attend most meetings, but I don't want to feel that a forum depends upon my presence.
I understand. Thank you.
I also serve on the zoning bylaw committee for the Conservation Commission.
That's right. Any further questions from board members?
Just an observation that her 24 years are the same as Mr. Peterson's 24 years.
She says for more than 25 years. I think she may have edged out.
Okay, maybe so.
Dr. Peterson.
Even so, again, we are enormously grateful to all the volunteer hours that you've given us.
I think it's important.
Over the last more than 25 years.
Whatever it is, I think it's important to serve.
Marion, thank you for your time and for coming before us tonight to update us.
My pleasure. Good night.
Good night. Next, Betsy Shore Gross, candidate for the...
Martin Luther King?
The new Martin Luther King Committee, not the non-ad hoc Martin Luther King Committee.
Good evening, Betsy Shore Gross, and yes, I am surprising you by applying for something non-omsteadian in the Town of Brookline. But I think possibly many of you don't know my personal background as opposed to my historic landscape preservation background. I am a child of the Holocaust. My maternal grandmother's family was lost in Budapest. My father's law school roommate was on the Nuremberg Trial staff, and so as a child, I saw pictures of what happened in the concentration camps that probably most children that age didn't and oughtn't to have seen. And then I have family who live in the South, and I went to school in the South, which is the first place that I saw signs that said colored only, white only. I stayed two years and went back to New England, and many years later participated in a court case where the college managed to break the will of the founder so that it could integrate. While I was at Sweetbarr, Eleanor Roosevelt was traveling the country with students from South Africa, and they came to Sweetbarr at the invitation of some of us, and when she came, we weren't allowed to use the dining room because she, the student with her was black. And she was very brave and became one of my heroines, along with Golda Meir. And then after I went back to Connecticut and spent some time raising my family, my younger son, my son, married a woman from Nicaragua, which made us a really very interesting rainbow family. And part of what I saw watching these, my grandchildren grow up, was how differently the girls who were a lovely cream color were treated from their youngest brother who was very dark. And it surprised me that there were still those kinds of situations in the 1990s and into the 21st century. But I remembered what I think was maybe the most important thing that Martin Luther King left for us, which was to say... which was to say that he hoped for a day when his children would be judged by the content of their character, not the color of their skin. And as I listened to what was going on in town and around town the last few years, I thought, you know, we're doing a much better job of teaching children tolerance and acceptance than we've perhaps been given credit for. And when I looked at the list of children who were graduated from our Brookline schools the other day, I thought, there is much more diversity in town than many, many people realize. And so, my hope is that now that we're going to formalize the Martin Luther King Committee, that we can go beyond the celebration in January and do some forums and some lectures and help people understand that there's a perhaps deeper interpretation of the word diversity than we have currently been looking at it in our town. So, that's why I want to serve.
Thank you. Thank you for that detailed discussion of your qualifications.
Well, I just assume my resume looks like it's all historic parks.
[laughing]
And my being, you'll forgive me for this one, my being a thorn in your side sometimes.
Selectman Daley.
Yeah, I just want to mention to you something I said to some of the other candidates for this committee. I'm, I'm very happy to hear of people interested in reaching out a little bit, because I think it's very important to involve schoolchildren in this effort. Because I think when you catch people early and you get them thinking about these issues, and when they go home and talk to their parents, that is very powerful. So, I'm just pleased to hear you.
And let me thank you for the work you've been trying to do the last year. I know it wasn't easy, but it certainly was worthwhile.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Betsy, as you know, we've talked about making the Martin Luther King Days Commission's mission not just about January 22nd or thereabouts, but doing some other program, programming during the year. Anything that you'd like to talk about in terms of potential?
I just think that there are lots of people in town from whom we haven't heard, and that it would be wonderful to do some kind of a lecture series. And whether it's for children or adults, I think there's a lot of opportunity for exploration and for sharing that will benefit us.
Great. Thank you so much for coming and telling us about yourself.
And are we allowed to mention that you're also a minor television?
[laughing]
I don't know what to call you exactly, spokesperson, celebrity?
I'm very pleased with this latest film.
Yeah.
I think they did a really good job. I thought.
We're talking about the Frederick Law Olsted documentary that was just recently aired on public television.
Yeah.
Where Ms. Gross is one of the authoritative speakers.
It was fun. You could tell how long they've been working on it, because I had a different set of glasses on.
[laughing] Well, I was fascinated to hear about how much work he'd done in Buffalo. I knew that there was work there, but I had no idea how extensive it was.
It is really gorgeous. It is worth seeing.
Again, thank you, Betsy.
You're very welcome.
Have a good evening. Next, we have two candidates for the naming committee. Carla Banker, you are first. Good evening, Carla.
Good evening.
Why don't you stop by introducing yourself and letting us know about the work of the, the naming committee and why you'd like to continue?
Well, I would like to continue, and one of the reasons I'd like to continue is because we are a quiet committee. We're one of, I think, the town's quieter committees. And the work that we are asked to do when naming or renaming comes up for, for a public facility, it's a balancing act between trying to understand the thinking and the motivation behind those who want something named or renamed, and looking at our guidelines and trying to make sure that we're, we're adhering to them and using them in a consistent manner. I would say that business has been slow since I was last before you, but I understand it may be picking up again quite soon with the possibility of a warrant article coming up in November. So.
So, I don't know about that. Will you give us a little preview?
Well, I think, I think there's going to be a request for the naming of, or expanding the name of the Cypress Playground to the Thomas Hennessy Field at Cypress Playground. Park and Recreation Commission, I think, approved that request a couple of weeks ago.
Good.
So, I expect we'll be hearing about it, and town meeting will be hearing about it as well.
I was hoping that the name, that was the name you were gonna say. So, good. Questions for, by members of the boards or comment?
I'm just gonna comment that I still say Tech Field. It's awful. And see, you don't even know what I'm talking about.
I don't. What are you talking about?
Downsfield.
Well, some people think it's Harry Downsfield, but it's not anymore.
So, you're dating yourself.
Right. It's the Kraft Family Athletic something or other at Harry Downsfield, maybe?
Athletic facility.
We still call it Tech Field.
Yeah, right. So, there's, some of us are just stuck in time warp.
We, the, the naming committee tends, I was gonna say we're a reactionary committee, but that isn't really what I wanted to say. What I wanted to say was react. Obviously, we're not proactive. We don't run around pointing out to things that we think should be named or renamed. But it did strike me the other day, thinking a little bit about coming before you this evening, that one of the things the naming committee could do would be to compile some sort of list that could be then available online, explaining the names behind our facilities and behind our streets. I mean, the, the information is, is kind of here and there on the town's website. The Parks, Park and Open Space Committee Division is very good about identifying why certain places have the names they do. The schools, often on the individual school website, explain the origins of those names. But there are other places that I don't think people have, have any idea. I know there are some that have mystified me. I do know that Horace James Circle was named for Horace James, who I, was a selectman, I think, for over forty years. So, I mean, you all can think about that and what the implications are.
Dr. Peterson. Ben, if you hang around long enough, maybe you'll get.
We'll see.
I think names are a great way to teach Brookline history. It's an easy way to teach Brookline history, and it's one of those things that's kind of fun. Factoids, I guess.
Ben Franco Rotary, I think.
It's got a nice ring to it. From my own edification, can you sort of describe the scope of the naming committee? Does it have purview over any facility in town that we name, or is it just open space? Is it rotaries? Is it schools?
Well, if you take all of the public facilities of the town, including the, the open space and the, the buildings, the school committee has purview over the interior rooms in, in their buildings, as do the library trustees. The veterans have their own, the Department of Veteran Services has its own protocol, as does Park and Recreation. And our guidelines basically say we don't even discuss a proposal until we've heard from those respective bodies, who are kind of the last stop before town meeting.
Good. I'll just make one comment, and I was debating whether to say it now or after the next interview, but I'll say it now. I think, I think naming has gone a lot smoother since this committee has been in existence, which hasn't been that long. It's been in my lifetime of involvement in, in town affairs.
I think this is, this is my second reappointment consideration.
And it certainly has helped us avoid some of just ad hoc going to town meeting, and then, you know, it's, it's hard to say no or apply an objective set of standards when, you know, the family of the person who's being honored is in the back. And, you know, it, it just goes a lot smoother. And I thank you, and I'll thank the.
The only other thing I would mention is I, I think that one of the, on the very long list that the override study committee is gonna prepare for a lot of different things, is likely to be a potential revenue source for the naming, for naming rights. And that may give us a lot more to, to think about. I think in the past, Brookline has been very reluctant to sell its names. And I don't, I don't think there's been a major cultural change in people's attitudes, but, you know, money is money. And I think that it wouldn't surprise me if it's something that, that's gonna come up at some point, which will make our meetings probably a little noisier than usual.
Good. Thank you, Carla, for your time and for your continued efforts for the town.
Thank you very much.
Harry Friedman. I hope we saved some of our material for Harry, because he always comes with material. Shtick.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Harry Friedman from Claflin Road, and I'm asking to be reappointed as the alternate on the naming committee, I think. Can't really remember if this is my first go-round on reappointment or my second.
Don't know. Tell us why you, why you like, why you enjoy doing this, Harry.
I enjoy doing it because, because I'm interested in, in, in how these things are named. And I, actually, the first time I spoke at town meeting, my very first town meeting, was about a naming issue. It was one of those situations where the family was sitting, not in the back of the room, but in the front of the room. And I spoke against it, which was not a comfortable position in which to be. And we ended up with a compromise that was made on the floor of town meeting, but it was a terrible way to do business. And I think one of the results of that was the adoption of the naming committee. And I have not been on it since the beginning, but we haven't done a great deal in the last three years. As Carla said, there hasn't been a lot of action. I think we did something for the cranes at the swimming pool. And I think we did a traffic circle for, and it was a boxer.
Yeah, Pender.
Yes. But other than that, it's been, it's been pretty quiet, at least so far.
So.
Well, there's two parks. I'm waiting for, I've been expecting to hear something about proposals.
On?
There's Skyline Park, and now we're gonna have the, what do we call it?
Fisher Hill?
Fisher Hill.
I've not actually heard anything. I actually have spoken at town meeting on Skyline Park when that name was proposed. I think I suggested the DuPont Municipal Park.
[laughing]
You could then call it the dump.
[laughing]
I'm unaware of what proposals there are for Fisher Hill, or whether that would be something where the naming rights were sold or not. You know, off the top of my head, the Fisher Hill Park.
I think, I think selling naming rights, I'm certainly not real comfortable with that. But if a worthy citizen who wanted to make a significant donation toward the park system or something were to come forward, then I would certainly consider.
Well, I would certainly consider it too. And of course, as, as Carla mentioned, anything on the parks goes first to Park and Rec. And not only would we want their input, but we usually, you know, if they put the kibosh on it, we don't then turn around and generally say, yeah, we're gonna do it, you know. So, they, they'd have the first sort of swing at that.
You know, it occurred to me recently, I'll tell you why in a second, that it's, renaming something has become an increased challenge because of, like, our reliance on, you know, navigation systems and, and the internet, and how to get the message out so that all the, all of the devices that we rely on are aware of, of name changes. Aware of it because, because the other day I, I asked Siri for directions to, to Brookline and insists on calling it Brooklyn instead of Brookline, instead of thinking about, how do you get, how do you get Apple to, to change the pronunciation of your name? But it occurs to me, how do you get them to recognize that Skyline Park has been changed from Skyline to DuPont Park, you know? And I, I don't know how you do. I do know that when you, you do Google Maps or some of those things, they list sites that are a mystery to anybody, businesses and parks that never existed and were never called anything by what's on the map. So, they seem to be done by people who don't often have a great deal of awareness of the geography of the place they're mapping. It'd be nice if we could figure out the alchemy behind it and how to, how to get the word out when we do change a name, but, and how to make them start saying Brookline instead of Brooklyn on Siri's.
I just need to have a conversation with Siri, I think.
Yeah, exactly.
I saved a tough question for Harry.
Right. Let's hear it.
So, we've talked a little bit about selling of naming rights over the past couple of minutes. And one of the proposals which the state floated in order to sort of balance their budget rates and revenue about a year and a half, two years ago, was to sell naming rights to MBTA stations. And while we, as a town, don't control MBTA property, I'm wondering whether you think there's a role informally to sort of influence the MBTA, should they decide at some point to sell the naming rights to Coolidge Corner Station?
Well, as I understand it, there was a recent article in the paper that this program was a tremendous failure, that nobody had actually offered any substantial money to change anything. And I was actually rather pleased. It, it makes me uncomfortable. I, I think there are certain circumstances where certain places might be named for certain things or people, you know, with a financial transaction involved. But generally speaking, I'm, I'm not crazy about it. And I was, as I said, I was not displeased that the MTA failed to actually sell anything.
See, and, and Harry calls it the MTA.
Well, and, and I'm sure everybody is aware of Mr. Trump's self-naming in Chicago on his.
I was actually just in Chicago this past weekend, and I saw it on, on the building from the highway. It's huge, and I can understand why there are objections to it.
Okay. If there are no further questions for Mr. Friedman, thank you for your continuing time and interest to this and other causes for the town, too.
We don't have the next two.
So, I don't see our next two applicants for interviews, Christine Fitzgerald or Mark Zurov. And so, let's skip down to Agenda Item Number Nine.
I'll just note on the Commission for Women, Kristen Ughman.
Ughman is listed, but she's moved away.
Yeah, she's moved away.
That's a good point. So, let's move on to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is the question of making appointments. It's recommended by Town Administrator of Department Heads, Administrators, and Other Officials and Employees in upsetting the salaries, therefore, effective July 1, 2014. Mr. Kletner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you know, our fiscal year is coming to a close and will be commencing our new fiscal year on July 1 of 2014, which is referred to as fiscal year 2015. And this time of year, the board, it's the practice of this board as, as an appointing authority to make annual appointments of department heads, senior management personnel, and other miscellaneous positions of the town. And it is also the time that this board makes a judgment as to the appropriate rate of increase in salary levels or compensation stipends for management and non-union personnel for the ensuing fiscal year. So, this annual process gives me the opportunity to formally acknowledge the, the high quality of the town's department heads and senior management personnel, most of them, most of whom have advanced degrees, extensive experience in their field, and are indeed leaders, considered leaders in their respective professions. And as the town administrator, I feel very fortunate and proud to lead an organization with such qualified and committed individuals. So, I obviously strongly encourage your appointment of these personnel, the schedule of the personnel that are before you this evening. The second matter is to act on the administration's proposal to increase the applicable salary ranges and compensations levels of, of all management and non-union employees. And we are proposing that the board authorize an increase in the rate of 2.0% for fiscal year 2015. As you know, this is the rate of increase that the town has already negotiated for that ensuing fiscal year for one of our larger unions, the AFSMI Union Unit. And it's within the budgeted levels that the town just recently appropriated for the fiscal year 15 budget. I think more importantly, as we enter into a year where the town will be very focused I think more importantly, as we enter into a year where the town will be very focused on our financial planning, as we look towards the following year, Fiscal '16, towards a likely tax referendum that the Selectmen may place on the ballot, that, you know, we have to be very careful about meeting the expectations of the voters of the community in terms of conservative budgeting. And I believe the 2% rate is within that range for Fiscal '15. Obviously, the override wouldn't take place until Fiscal '16, so we'll have another chance to, to deal with that. But as we go into this year of fairly focused financial planning, I believe that represents, the 2%, represents a very reasonable expectation for salary levels in this, in this economic climate and given the rates of increase in our competition, which is the municipal government industry in eastern Massachusetts. So with that, I would respectfully request the Board's approval of the two votes that are consistent with the, are incorporated within your memo, the memo before you this evening.
Questions or comments from Board members? Selectman Daley.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think that our Department Heads are doing an outstanding job. And thank you, Mr. Kleckner, for your leadership there, but I will say the continue, the town continues to me to seem to be very well-run. And I know it's a constant challenge with the effects of Proposition Two and a Half, when our costs, I can't remember a year where our costs only went up 2.5%. So to continue to see a well-run town with those constraints is quite impressive.
Thank you.
I'd just like to chime in, because I do believe we have a really great team. It's, they're highly qualified, but one of the characteristics that I find so impressive is that they work together, they support one another, sometimes in sort of unlikely ways, but the fact is that when there's, let's say, a problem that has to do with IT, the IT team is right there on the spot, prepared to help solve it. And it's equally true of other departments. I picked that one because they sort of cross over everybody. They're not, what they do isn't focused on a particular isolated service. But it seems to me that the Department Heads and all of their staff work together and appreciate each other in really important ways. And I just feel like it's something we should all be very pleased and proud of.
Go ahead.
And I'll just echo and say that I enthusiastically support this recommendation. And it's, it's always been a pleasure discovering, to me, just the universal high quality of our management staff. Public sector employees and managers get dumped upon in the national press, and I think that's unfounded, clearly here in Brookline. I would venture to say it's unfounded in a lot of the public sector, but I think especially here in Brookline.
And I want to echo everybody else's comments and say I'm constantly impressed by the quality of our Department Heads and their staff. And I'm frequently heartened when I see members of Department Heads at community events with their families. And I think it speaks to their commitment to the job and their, their sense that they're just as much a member of the community as residents of Brookline.
Great, thank you. Well, I'm gonna move that we make the annual appointments for July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015, inclusive, in accordance with the, the listing in our, in our Attachment A of our agenda. And that's starting on page nine dash three. And that's for Department Heads for Management Non-Union Positions, including in the Selectmen's Office, the Human Resources Department, and the Legal Department, that we make the miscellaneous appointments that are listed there as well, and that we further adopt the salary adjustments as described on the table on page nine dash five and nine dash six of our agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Wachinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And the Chair also votes aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Department Heads. We now have a little leftover business from our last meeting, that is open-air parking renewals. There was one that we did not complete last time, and I think we're ready to move forward with it today.
Yeah, I held it, and I was very pleased that the Building Commissioner has indicated that the operator has maintained compliance over the last year. And therefore, I'm perfectly happy to recommend that we approve or agree that we should approve this open-air parking license.
Okay, got it. Okay, so any further question or comment, Donna?
And just for the record, which I think probably, we don't need to quote, but there, we had taken a vote with regard to this particular location. And it's printed on the backside of the report from the Building Department in case anybody wants to refer to it.
Good. So I'm gonna move then that we approve the application of Christine DeBakely for a license to conduct and maintain an open-air parking lot at 3 Washington Street, outlet Crescent for five automobiles, subject to the same conditions that were previously agreed to and described in our, in the previous license. All those in favor say aye. Selectman Daley.
Aye.
Selectman DeWitt.
Aye.
Selectman Wachinski.
Aye.
Selectman Franco.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Well, that brings us to the end of our agenda, but we still have not seen Christine Fitzgerald or Mark Zurov. And I wonder if they were told eight o'clock.
Well, what I think happens is when there are so many applicants, we try to stagger them a bit. I might suggest that, I'll bring in the documents to sign if you want to wait a few minutes before you adjourn.
Yeah, I think we should wait till eight o'clock, because it's possible that they were told eight o'clock.
Sure, yeah. I think Kate may be able to help me with this, but I believe Ms. Parks has suggested that they're usually offered, like, 10-minute intervals, so each one is, you'd have to go back and count from the beginning and see where we would be right now if you gave them each 10 minutes. Oh, you're, you're missing a name.
I know the greatest thing that was ever... I imagine her perspective was...
In the drawing, and I realize that I'm just trying to, probably, maybe somebody very hard would you, um, I don't know, this, I have a number of standard, expected processes that we all, we all have. I have a problem with this. I should even work, like, really hard. And when actually, is doing more of this, they're probably more responsive compared to us. Yeah, I don't know, there, I don't know. Yeah. Yeah. Speaking of this, I have thoughts. I was, I was...
All right, so yeah, we're gonna reconvene now and return to Agenda Item Number Eight, which is our Boards and Commissions' Interviews. And we now have Mark Zurov before us, who is a candidate for Zoning Board of Appeals, for reappointments at the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mark, why don't you tell us a bit about yourself and about why you're interested in reappointment?
I've now been on the Board for six years. I have to tell you that I've enjoyed every hearing, every year that I've served. I enjoy serving the town and serving the people of the town. And zoning law is something I'm very interested in, and I've studied it as I've gone along. And I feel I've gotten better as the process has proceeded. So I'd like to stay on.
Good. Glad you, glad you do. Nancy?
Well, I'm delighted to hear you say you've enjoyed it, because I always think that's a pretty tough job.
It isn't, it isn't easy. The pay isn't that good. But I've enjoyed serving.
You do get paid.
Yeah. One of the few boards that does.
Unlike most of them, right. So I notice right now, I think on the associate members, we have a couple of openings. And what would you say, what would your advice be to us in terms of who to look for for filling the other openings?
Having been there and seen that it's been difficult to fill the spaces, there are any number of attorneys in our town, and many competent attorneys in the town. I think that it's probably difficult to fill a spot because it requires a lot of time. And it probably would be better if we had additional members so we could spread the I think it appeals to people that are, to, that like serving the town and like the law, the law part of it. It's not just serving on a board or commission, because I know that, I serve on the Zoning Code Advisory Committee, and that's far less entertaining and less engaging than sitting on the ZBA. And I know the Planning Board people, that's a different, all different milieu. In terms of attracting other candidates, I think you've got to go out and maybe find some younger people that are trying to get established, and maybe they, they can see the ZBA as a way to get in front of the town and let people know that they are here and citizens of the town, they can, they're interested in serving the town.
Well, it's, it's a little tough, though, with the conflict of interests thing, that you can't really be trying to practice that type of law, for instance, in Brookline.
Well, and I understand that.
If you're gonna serve on the ZBA.
I've been attracted to representing parties in other towns. And I think that we, as a Board in Brookline, I think that we're one of the best Boards out there compared to other towns. Because I've been before other Boards, and they have a different agenda. I think that we're, and I'm patting myself on the back inadvertently, I guess, but we're more cerebral about what our job is than some Boards. And I know one in particular where it seems to be all about politics and has nothing to do with what the code is all about. So again, one of the reasons that I enjoy doing it is because I approach it on a cerebral basis. But I also understand that making progress in the town, helping people to use their properties in the best possible way is a way of serving the population, but still within the code. I mean, it's still law, and we still try to abide by the law. So, you know, there must be some young people out there that want to serve the town and also want to learn about zoning law? Because I didn't know a whole lot about zoning when I joined the Board. I just knew that I wanted to practice for the town. And now I feel like I've learned a great deal.
Well, we appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I share two of your observations, Mark. One that, that we have, the planning and zoning process in Brookline is head and shoulders above anything I've seen in any other towns. And I, like you, practice before other Boards and Commissions and other municipalities that have served in Brookline's Planning Board and seen our ZBA up close, and we do it better than anybody. I also share your, your observation that probably the best candidates for these jobs are people who view it as entertainment and a night at the theater, if you will, so...
I think we're a little less dramatic than some. And I know our big brother, right next door, I found their zoning process to be appalling, frankly. I mean, comparatively, we're much more sophisticated than they are.
Good. Any other questions?
I actually have a question, which I'm beginning to think you're gonna say everything's fine, but folks often say to us, "Your zoning bylaw is so complicated." I find it complicated. Do you think there are any things we could do to make it easier to understand? I'm not talking about changing it particularly, but more accessible to the folks who might need to come in for something from time to time and don't have a zoning professional background?
Well, you'd probably be surprised to hear me say that I really think our code is plainer and easier to understand than many.
Really? Wow.
There are many towns out there whose codes need serious reform. And I know that, I serve on the Chamber of Commerce in Needham and Newton. And Newton just is undergoing their revision of their code. And surprisingly, their code, their new code is going to be very similar to our code.
Oh, interesting.
And they engaged a very serious professional assistance bureau to assist them in drafting their new code. So what I will say to you is I think that the Building Department does a fine job of vetting people and helping them enter the process. And I think the Planning Board, you know, gives guidance to people.
We obviously very much appreciate lawyers, it's just that on this particular, on the ZBA at least, we need another architect.
Christine, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself, besides the fact that you're a lawyer, and what your interest is in the Commission?
I have been privileged to be a resident of Brookline for the last 10 years. My first introduction to the town of Brookline was when I was a student at B.C. Law School and living in Brighton, and I was fascinated by trees and all of the beautiful things that our town has to offer, and so, fast forward to how I got to become a lawyer, my first opportunity, when I moved back up to the Boston area from New York City 10 years ago, Brookline was the first and only place that I looked, and I couldn't be happier to still be living here. What brings me here is, I have had a, what seems to be a less traditional path than a lot of the people that we live amongst, and that the people who live in Brookline have vast opportunities afforded to them by nature of the public school system and the people that they live amongst. My story is a little different. I'm one of five children to an appliance repairman father, and just a high school graduate, school aide, mother. Nobody in my family was educated. They didn't know how to educate their children, because nobody before them had been educated. My grandmother came over from Scotland and worked in a paper mill until she passed away. So, I had to do everything on my own. I grew up in New Jersey. We didn't know anything about education. We knew my dad was in a union, and to my family, that was how you did well, and I still have tremendous respect. My entire family have come from a proud heritage of unions, but they are all people who had to make their living working with their hands and sometimes breaking their backs doing it. How my path sort of diverged was, I was always naturally a decent student, a pretty good student, actually, and unfortunately, my dad passed away when I was a senior in high school, and I was really scared and confused, and I didn't know what to do about going out into the world. I was one of a twin, and my sister and I were the youngers, so I said, "Well, what the heck?" You know, college, you know, and I happen to be, because of our family's circumstances, I think my dad, in his last year alive, made $35,000 a year raising five kids. So, I got some financial aid, and I managed to do real well in school, and there I saw what I was missing by not living in a community like Brookline. There were other people in my school, I went to a state school, which gave me a good education, and I'm happy to have it, but I saw that other students who came from better backgrounds, or I should say backgrounds with more opportunity, or their, or whose families knew the value and importance of education, and particularly for young girls and women, knew so much more about things that I didn't know. I didn't know anything about the arts, and people would talk about history, and, you know, it was baffling to me, and it was also really humbling, because here I was, I thought that I was good enough to get into a school, and I was, only there was so much more catching up that I had to do, and it took me a long time to really realize that they were no better than me, they just had different opportunities than I had had. But it set something up inside of me that said, "No, sort of, you have to prove something, not, maybe just to myself." And so, I worked really hard, and I did really, really well, and fast forward, and then I graduated from college, becoming the first person ever in my family to graduate from college, and I saw all that was still out there, that still could be done, and some silly notion compelled me to law school, where I also did well enough to get a job with a white shoe law firm in New York City, and again, I said, "Oh, my God, they're going to, you know, I'm a fraud, they're going to know that I don't belong here," although, again, all of these people with all of these pedigrees, and here I am, a kid from a dirt road in the middle of New Jersey who went to a state school, and, but again, I did really well, and I saw around me a lot of people who, again, still had so much more than I had had, but I also saw, because I got the chance to do recruiting at a lot of, at a lot of law schools for this firm, that there were also kids who were just like me, that just needed a hand, or just needed somebody who would take an interest in them and show them the way, or help bring them up, and there were men as well, as well as women, and I were also minorities, and they were transgendered and gay and lesbian population, people that, sort of, that we were, you know, at some point or in some way in our lives, we had all sort of, not been overlooked, but we weren't going to get there on our own. And so, now I've done well, and I've made a career for myself, and I live a good life, and I, in my first year as an attorney, I made like five times more, it was the crazy heydays of when all of the salaries in the dot-coms were going crazy, and I made like five times more than my father had ever made in his entire life, and it was ridiculous and funny to me, and I never spent any of it, because I was always afraid they were going to take it away, and then, you know, and I was going to go back, and so, I worked, you know, for the last 15, 17 years, I've worked really hard building my career and establishing it, and I've gotten to the point now where that doesn't matter so much. I don't, you know, a couple of years ago, I decided that I don't have anything to prove to anybody anymore. I proved it to myself, I know that I'm good at what I do, and I know that my background didn't make me who I was, that I had always had the ability, and so, the process of being a lawyer and showing the world that I'm a really good lawyer and all of these other things has become less important to my life, and the things that sort of really matter that we should have always known in the end, was always that, what can you do, how can you help somebody else out? What, you know, what else can I do that's actually more meaningful to me than making money, being a lawyer, and doing all of those things? And so, I'm embarrassed to say that I didn't even know that the Brookline Commission for Women existed. I happened, I don't remember how I happened to come across it, but it was quite recently, and that seemed to me to be a perfect way to try to get involved and do something that actually, that matters more than the career and what I do for a living, and so, I'd be really interested in, you know, helping other women, young girls, realize their potential, helping people recognize the value that women can bring, not only as, you know, business owners, but socially, and, you know, just overall contributing to make our town and our business and the world in general for women a little bit easier, and just more supportive.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that story with us, too. Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I just must say, I love your story. Wow.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
It's a great story, so I think that you could play a valuable role on the Commission for Women, and certainly inspirational just to hear what you went through, so... I don't know if they've done this, but doing some, you know, seminars or something at the high school on counseling possibilities to young girls might be a great way for you to contribute.
I would be happy to do that.
I actually can give you even more concrete thought. The Commission for Women is very actively involved in a kind of, think of it sort of as a research project, the title of which is, women, young women and girls striving and thriving in Brookline, but there have been two sessions, sort of, working groups talking about low-income women, and exactly the kind of thing you described, and what their challenges are compared to those other kids whose lives were, let's say, easier for them, or had better, just mentoring and other experiences. The Commission for Women is very much involved in this, and very interested in finding people who can, as I suspect you would be, very good at, in a mentoring role, for kids who will be in Brookline and go through the Brookline system, but nonetheless, will be different in the same way that you've described you remember feeling, and I think probably you will find, very quickly, with the Commission, other ways that you can contribute from your own experiences, so it sounds like you'd be a great match.
Oh, great. It does, it sounds like something that I would really and truly love to do, if that, if those are, if there are women, young women, girls out there who need the confidence that they can really do it, sign me up.
Right. Well, we can appoint you first, then you can sign up.
Christine, would you share with us what your area of practice is, just so we know, now that we, now that we know you, if we see another role for you in the town, we'd like to know what resources are available?
Sure. I'm primarily a business litigator. I do some employment litigation, mostly on the company side. I, my background has, I started out doing a lot of commercial bankruptcy litigation, more so now, I do a lot in the financial services field. I also do a lot of work on trade secrets and employment contracts and general business disputes, but it is, I also do some regular civil litigation, but it is a very small part of what I do.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions from Board members? Thank you very much for your interest. We're not making our appointments tonight, but we will be very shortly, and you'll be hearing from us.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. And that concludes this meeting of the Brookline Board of Selectmen. Thank you all.